All of them let him out Saturday. Got him in jail for three weeks. And let him out on Friday. And he said the same thing. He wanted to know how to get in City Hall where he can speak what's going on in the 3rd Ward with Murphy Ward on. The street is pop way. It's Pop Way Street, it keep getting messed up. And it's a bad domestic situation, worse than Chicago. Organized crime. Jim McPope, Pope got something, seemed like he got something against my neighbor. Because every time he tried to make it to City Hall to address, like I'm standing up here now, the situation they, they seem like they put the man in a fight with his family and put him in jail and then let him out and he happened to run into me every time. Right in front of the BMW store in the dumpster in front of every other neighbor's. And everybody, and he be telling me stuff that makes you cringe at your knees and you just get, and you gotta keep looking behind you, you don't know what's going on. Because the city police, sometimes I think they the ones doing the drive-by shooting and all that junk. Because they're messing with the guy. Now, supposed to be there at 2 o'clock, but, but I got here late and you see, and I say if you see me. Anyway, I'm here and uh, I wonder, well, I see Murphy here too, we can get a press visit if he ever show up and if we get one along. And you see, gonna see what this city really made out of, with this uh, and another thing. The guy that messed up the water bin, they let, it was a one-man jury, they let it off with all this crum, it died there or, died there, I mean, um. And that's what they be going on in Flint. People think they don't get away with their water situation, and they, you know, over there with Jefferson School, Murphy ended up walking out. Hope everybody watching this stuff, get a $25,000 dollar loan and cover it. And anyway, all this is my last call, thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Melissa Marsky, I live in the 6th Ward. Um, yep. I caught on the news today during sitting there saying, you guys are going to discuss the ARBA money. There is no more ARBA money, it's in the general fund, why do you keep calling it the ARBA money? I don't get it. You know, we, the residents keep asking for help, and all you guys are doing is helping your own pockets. You know, we have a mayor who wants to take Dan Kennedy's seat, which I have enough understanding because, yeah, he has done not one thing for the city of Flint, except for downtown, the flood, the water isn't clean. Okay, we're still what, 95% since Mayor Karen Weaver left? I mean, how many years ago was that? And we're still at 95%? Are you kidding me? I mean, and obviously somehow there's trips getting paid for, for Iowa. Um, I'm not sure if residents are still paying for, um, Liddell Lewis's, uh, police escort from home to the, uh, council meetings. Um, I mean, damn, and Dennis, he couldn't even get the police to help him when his family was getting threatened. That's kinda sad. I mean, seriously, you guys wanna sit there and have these seats and then you wanna promote people? Unless promote people that are doing things for the residents. Cause this is ridiculous. I mean, we're, we got put into a $9 million more garbage contract. Who does that crap? Yeah. You know, the, what about the, um, the golf courses? You guys turned down a million dollar golf course deal? Are you kidding me? And that was higher than what everyone else was willing to give you. Who does that?
I mean.
I mean, please, make that make sense to the residents. What is it that, I mean, seriously, in Kansas, you can't talk about that? Y'all don't, you do not sit there and listen to my guy, because my guy wanna tell you to do backdoor deals. My guy wanna tell you to listen to the mayor. My guy would not tell you to lie to the resident dads. And do the residents dirty. Liddell Lewis, you lied so bad last week, I mean, seriously, it was, I mean.
I mean.
It was off the chain. Sweetheart, you need to start going back and looking at your meetings and your dumpster fires and everything else. And when you sit there and say you didn't say something, what you did, and it's on recording, you're nothing but a liar. And you need to be out here, mayor, I know you from much of that. I mean, I don't know what city you're gonna go to next, or the state you're gonna go to next, but if I hear you right, I'm gonna let them all know how you behaved in Flint Council. And thank you.
Thank you. One moment, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
One moment, ma'am, one moment. Right, okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Alicia Fisher, I'm here on behalf of my daughter and her family. A home is a place that should be peaceful, a place of comfort, a home should be your refuge. My daughter and her family reside in 4th A. Mr. Piper, I have attempted to contact you on several occasions regarding the incidents that have taken place in her residence between she and her neighbor. You have never returned my calls, and we emailed doing a copy of incidents, I asked you to respond and you did not. These incidents include the neighbor shooting the house and shattering windows with a BB gun.
Whoa.
The neighbor shooting my daughter's husband in the back with a BB gun. The neighbor shooting a car that was sitting in her drive with a BB gun, and I have a testament here. Calling her African-American friends and her family the n-verse. The neighbor stabbed my daughter, the officers called it a scratch. Tensions were sliced and she is unable to use her middle finger on her right hand. She has a video of this incident, and she has a video of him saying that he wished he had cut deeper and killed her.
Whoa.
She has a video where he called the police and said that she was threatening him with the gun. She was outside, cameras running. He left after he made the call. She asked the officers to review the camera and the time that the call came in, she never left her porch. They did not, they did not file a false report either, and had the police come with, to the house with guns drawn. They may have hurt or killed her. There are so many other incidents that I don't have time for in my three minutes. She's had a miscarriage and then a premature baby, I'm sure from some distress from the situation. I ask you, what if your daughter wanted to go out on a sunny day, sit on her front porch or back patio, drink coffee, and she couldn't? Because she's afraid that the neighbor will shoot her or the baby with a BB gun? Or call her names, what would you do? This type of behavior is harassment and destruction of property. Which would not be allowed to take place if it were happening to any of you or your home. If it were happening to the mayor or his home, a police officer or his home. If the tables were turned, I have to believe that if my daughter were white, blond hair, blue eyes, and rondo, the neighbor was black, this destruction and harassment would not have continued for four years and I would have gotten a callback from now, by now. These are hate crimes and malicious destruction of property. These crimes cause mental anguish and terror. I am here to ask for someone to do their job and assist my daughter in giving relief from racism, that hate, stupidity, and the hell that is attached to her. I am also asking for someone to finally do their job.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Good evening, council. This evening I feel it is necessary to share a Black History reflection with you. Most of us are familiar with the names of Mr. Bernard Truth, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, Mrs. Rosa Parks, Dr. Martin Luther Jr., and Lyndon Thomas. Uh, these heroes, cheerleaders stood their grounds and fought for equal rights. For most of us, these are our ancestors. We stand on their shoulders today. I ask you, city council, has their sacrifice been in vain? It appears that several of you on this council love racist rhetoric. I'm talking in bolded lies, noxious fairy tales, and fake social media accounts to govern how we live. In so doing, you dishonor our ancestors. I'll say it again, you dishonor our ancestors. Look away, but I'm talking to you. Remember, Dr. King said, "We will walk hand in hand someday." Did his 1963 dream die? How would we allow greed, self-righteousness, and ignorance to prevail over sound, reasonable decision-making? Did you forget about the ancestors? Did you forget about the God you claim you serve? On tonight's agenda, Philly the vacancy at Hurley Hospital. Liddell, I know you're too busy writing to listen, but is this your pastor? Does he know how you behave? We are ashamed of you personally and professionally. We are ashamed of you personally and professionally. This lengthy prelude leads me to my Black History moment. City council, there is an ethics and accountability board, but there's also a fearless warrior who, like Mr. Bernard Truth, is not afraid to cry loud. She spent her wedding anniversary collecting signatures, praise God. This speaks volumes to me. Her committed husband walked the streets with her and countless other people, seeking the removal of those who were not representing the community honorably. Her walk is very reminiscent of the ancestors, and we are standing on their shoulders. I am sorry I was not able to walk with you, but you have my support and highest respect. While you were out, I was praying that the Lord would continue to dispatch angels to keep you safe from danger. Corroded pipes, loose dogs, falling tars, broken porches, and all the things ARBA funds were assigned to repair. God is faithful. Would you please accept a small thank you, Mrs. Beverly Biggsley, you are my Black History hero.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Is there anyone else?
I'm with council, praise God, with whom all is possible, and without whom, nothing is possible.
Excuse me, Senator Larry, can you speak a little bit more into the mic?
Yes, praise God, with whom all is possible, and without whom, nothing is possible. We wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principles, against powers, against the rumors and darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places. With all due respect, amen to y'all.
Amen.
We are dealing with some wickedness in high places. So it's not my brother and sister fighting, it's a whole sacrament for us. And you have to have your faith, and it says, "Save the devil from the scripture, fill the whole framework of God, and have it done all."
I'm Chakal Mohammed, Minister of Propaganda for the Committee to Elect Mr. Hutchinson for President of the United States. Honorable counsel, mayor's office, um, city attorney's office, clerk's office, pumping safety, local media, residents of the city, of the beautiful, great city of Flint, Michigan, citizens of the United States and the world. I rise and I exhale myself as much time as I may consume to extend and revise our laws. I'd like to talk about these three dates in February, Black History Month as a whole, Valentine's Day, and President's Day. Out of all the people that I could speak of in Black History Month, Malcolm X, his teacher followed him. When he asked to be a lawyer, he told him that being an attorney is no realistic goal for a lawyer. And, uh, you know, that is invisible, the systematic racism that we have to deal with in America. And we will, and we are dealing with. Uh, Hannibal, who took elephants up a mountain, up, across, and around a mountain to defeat the Roman army. I want to talk about tonight, Dennis Edwards. Dennis Edwards was one of the Temptations from Old Town. And there was a little situation that happened with the Temptations. One of the members of the Temptations started feeling theyself, uh, thinking he was bigger than the roof.
Okay, alright.
And what happened was, Mr. Barry Corden got together with Olson Brothers, and they had what they call a "corn." That's what you call it here, a corn. They had a corn, and out of that corn, three things came about. They said, "This man messing up my place." And the next thing was, if he mess up tonight, he's out. Barry Corden.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, may I have one more time?
Unfortunately, so you cannot have any more time, but there is a council meeting that's happening directly after this, and the public will have an opportunity to speak. So you can finish your comments there.
So what happened was Dennis.
So thank you, sir, we're no longer. No, sir, thank you.
Y'all ain't done, talk to each other.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the public? Please give me the counsel.
Put the mic down, Ms. Biggs.
Ema, sir.
My name is Beverly Biggsley. I, uh, want to say to you, I don't want your prayers. Because if you didn't pray for your daddy with 190 pounds, I know you can not pray for him.
Ms. Biggsley, what we will not do tonight is personal attacks. So stick to, stick to either the agenda or your issues that you have with the council. I know that you would like a reaction, I apologize for ordering. So I actually pray for everyone, so please stick to them.
With me, your prayers aren't anything, okay? Don't pray for me. Pray for the baby, which is Liddell. And, Liddell, you went around telling the pastor you would give him $50,000 if he removed me out of that. Kenny said, that was fine with him, that was fine with him. But I have hundreds of sheets of paper where I paid this man over $19,000. And, and a lot of it wasn't for rent, it was for him to go to the casino, where he borrowing money from me. But you tried to take up form, because you promised him. That's why you say you guys won't vote for him, because of the mere fact, he's in the 1st Ward, and you trying to help the 1st Ward. When Eric was in that seat, you didn't think about the 1st Ward. And that's why I brought this poster board, to let Eric know, we all care for him. Whether you care for him or not, whether you all out here for him or not, you care for him. And I wanted to put it in front of his, in front of his seat, but I know y'all won't agree to that. And I brought him a duck.
I'm sorry, Ms. Levy, please. Irel, would you please take that poster back to your seat with you?
Say?
Take the poster back to your speaker's room.
I don't think you should be interrupting the speaker. Okay? You can say what you wanted to say to Irel after her speak.
That is improper point, continue, Ms. Biggs. That is an improper point, continue, Ms. Biggs.
An explanation I did, and you right, that red bitch confused you.
Ms. Biggs, this is going toward personal, so you can't get back off of the personal attack.
You can't stop her. All the lies, all the lies.
The speaker has a first amendment right.
Right.
Now, we talking about her, now we talking about her. But she should have been praying for them victims that her daddy got hold to.
Alright, Ms. Biggs, you make y'all have a seat, thank you.
I am.
Thank you, Ruby Redd, thank you.
Absolutely, as long as you know the color, is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Hey, you want to talk about personal attacks on that?
A personal attack?
He said, as long as she knows the color, Dennis, not today, go ahead.
Every day.
Yeah, I would like to tell you something, you cannot stop her from what she got to say, period, point blank. Hey, man, you know what? You need to get out to the feelings, man. I thought you was a better person than what you are.
Mr. Woodson.
What?
This is borderlining a personal attack.
I ain't even worried about what you got to say.
I need you to be worried, I need you to say something. Absolutely, that's not a point.
I am of your order. Thank you. First of all, you cannot point to 27.2, you cannot go back and forth.
Oh, it's not a back and forth, thank you, go ahead.
I was not done, I was not done, and I get you maybe a question.
Not flustered at all, it's not a point. Get to the proper point, or you are finished. Get to the proper point, or you are finished.
How to get to my point of order?
Get to the proper point, or you are finished.
Excuse you.
Not going back and forth with the community.
I can't even talk, you gonna close your mouth?
Okay, you cannot speak to me like that.
I was speaking, I said, point of order.
What is your point?
Point of order, you cannot go back and forth with the audience.
And I told you that again, because I am not going back and forth.
I'm not done.
That's fine, you don't have to say that, that's fine.
You can, you can not, I'm off.
I can, bring it on, bring it on.
You don't get to control my voice, love.
Continue, Mr. Woodson.
I understand what you're presenting.
Continue, Mr. Woodson, continue, Mr. Woodson.
Again, you are the worst council person I've seen in my life.
Second.
And, and, you know, you don't know how to take, you mix personal and political, you know, differences. You are sad, uh, I spoke to every council person. And Councilwoman Lewis, we know we don't like each other, but she still had the professionalism to speak back. She spoke back, she said, "How you doing?" But, I still don't like you, but at the same time, you spoke back. That's, that's the thing. We got court tomorrow, at 2 o'clock, and our, Leona tried to get the president to speak out against a lead attorney for, for a wire cases. And we sitting up here, our council, don't know nothing, man. Y'all sit up here and just vote along, just to go along. And Candace, I swear to God, man, I can't even think of what I want to talk about. Oh, do not vote for, uh, Christopher Martin, that is church, it's not, uh, his resident. Plus, find out how many residents, uh, Flint residents, non-residents, we got. I'm trying to think of something that I can say personally about you, uh, Candace, so you can try to put me out so I can sue again. Because just like the men of the detectives, they don't like the bottom, and he was right. And you, Candace, I'm gonna make sure that I get out to help Ms. Marie, Jan Marie, to get you out of that. But you are a sad case. You know, you sit back and you try to tell somebody not to do something, and then you throw in your little smart remarks at the end of what it is that you're violating them for. And I, I swear, Brad, I'm just gonna sit down because you are a sad case. Oh, real quick, can you tell us, what did you change in this ordinance? No, I get it, but I don't feel like you're talking, you know? Candace, you say.
Thank you, is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Jan Marie Arbor, resident of the 7th Ward and candidate for 7th Ward Council seat. I'm here specifically to refer to some of the resolutions that will come before you during special affairs. To avoid sounding repetitive, I will omit 2400 and refer to each resolution by its suffix. Resolution 21, Regarding Priority Waste and Acknowledgement of the ML King Federal Holiday to Accord His Employees' Time Off. It presently reads "A Day" versus "The Day." Does Councilman Murphy suggest any day off? Or might it be specific to the 3rd Monday of January each year to observe the day with appropriate civic, community, and service projects in honor of Dr. King? I urge amendment to the resolution with specificity to the date and to its purpose. Regarding Resolution Ending in Number 42, Regarding Recognition of February as Black History Month in the City of Flint. Black History Month occurs annually, as we know, between February 1st and March 1st. I recommend the time period be added to the amendment, along with a revision to include language such as honoring the triumphs and struggles of African-Americans in Flint's history and United States history. Resolutions 43, 44, 45, 49, and 51 regarding appointments to boards and commissions. None of those resolutions include the name of the individual who is being replaced by the newly recommended individual. It's my understanding that this has been a practice in the past. I request that all of these resolutions be returned to administration for amendment to include the name of the individual currently holding the seat, to ensure an accurate historical record be made.
Hey!
And finally, Resolution Number 43, Regarding Appointment of Christopher Martin to Hurley Board of Managers. As I understand it, Hurley's 15-member board is composed of nine Flint residents, three Genesee County residents, and three medical professionals. Mr. Martin is a member of clergy and not a medical professional.
Thank you.
And is therefore desired to know who Mr. Martin is. Mr. Martin will replace.
Ms. Jan Marie, your time is up.
Should be included in the body of the resolution.
Your time is up, you no longer have the floor.
It's my understanding that one residency is.
Residents today have a master's as officers to watch, on this day. I ask officers.
And council boarders, due diligence here to ensure.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
No, 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 no!
No!
Tell you a joke.
Yeah, they might shoot.
Hey, who you?
Oh, that's a little. They might not, they might not see.
I am, I am, I am. I am. See, you ready to deal with him right now, it ain't nothing.
Hey, what's up?
He don't care, we gonna wait and see. That ain't no play, girl, that ain't no play.
No, what's up?
You are calling, I'm telling you.
I'll stand up again. Uh, my name is Wintus Law, and I'm here to speak on behalf of John Carpenter, who's in Florida. And I am speaking for him regarding Resolution Number 240053, Management and Maintenance Agreement for President Golf LLC. Operations for frequent occurrence with golf courses. He said, "I am asking that the statement be read because he's important, and after fair and square bid initiated not by the fair but by a line zero law of the city council, my company's bid to take over management of the city's last 290 public courses failed by a huge margin. My bid includes proposed programs for kids and ideas to improve the courses to preserve them for future generations. I also pledge to help bring buildings and both courses up to code, and was a former aide to former Mayor Don Williamson in charge of inspections. Let me assure you that my inspections of the current conditions warrant that both courses be condemned immediately after 10 years of absolute neglect by the current operator. He told the council he was losing money while paying $15,000 per year, yet upped his bid to $42,500 per year according to the agenda before you. It says I was disqualified, and I'm the most qualified bidder by a mile after transforming Don Williamson's sugar bush facility from mere bankruptcy to a multi-millionary facility. I want to do the same for Flint's valuable but neglected assets. Our residents deserve better. If you vote to approve this, you don't belong in office because you do not have the best interest of the residents at heart. My 19 partners include some of this community's most prominent leaders, who were convinced to join my efforts to help children have opportunities to play golf closer to home and unlike these necessary to become competitive. home, and unlike he's necessary to become competitive in the business world to prepare for future deals made from the golf courses of America. Sincerely, John Carpenter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Yes, my name is Audrey Young, and how I address the issue? I am very disappointed in your behavior, I have to say that. But I'm very disappointed in some of your behavior, some of your city officials. Thursday night, while at a party, uh, 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 candidate's party, one of the city officials, I believe he would chief the staff, came and threatened myself and another city resident. During this course of time, he told us, he's no longer a city councilman, that he used to whoop behind, he just said that nice in the past, and that he would whoop us. He said this in a, in a bar, that is definitely not becoming. There's some other things that happened, I won't discuss it at this time, but that behavior is definitely not becoming of a city employee. It happened after you left, Mr. Fighter. You had just left, when this, this, this incident did occur. Now, if we got city employees coming, and I know that happened before with another city employee going after a city councilman, and that same kind of stuff happened, what are we to say as citizens? We, now, as you can see, my shirt says, Flint is still broken. This is from five years ago, when we was at five years, when I was at ten years, and Flint still ain't fixed. I still get rashes from the water if I don't change my water filter in time. I posted the filter that came out of my whole house filtration system that showed the crud, the dirt, the copper, the pharmaceuticals that's still in the water going into our houses, that's infesting us and causing us to have clean things. I'd like to thank the cancer cluster study that's coming in here, but like I said before, I'm concerned with the health, other healthies. We gotta eat healthy, just to make sure we ain't getting the cancer from the water and the other things that's going on in our water. It still have led in, it is not led free. Anybody outside of the city, including my family, said, well, did, you know, they called the family, they called some of my friends, they mean we already got a settlement. You know, they asked, can they borrow ten, fifteen, twenty dollars, a couple hundred dollars? They mean we got some money. We ain't seen no money from a settlement. We still suffering. Our roofs still ain't fixed. Our pipes in our homes still ain't fixed. Mine's constantly, we have, I have to replace some pipes in my home because it corroded from the water. So if we at this time think that we're fixed, and we've had all these millions of dollars coming into town for our, I am very disappointed that the citizens have not gotten a chance to see the, or reap the benefits from that. Because the citizens should have reached out, okay, with all of the 501(c)(3)'s and outreach programs that's going on, but if those programs ain't getting those dollars to none of the residents, what, what, what was it? It's not any good for any of us. If you didn't at least go there, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, if we could have the clerk call the time instead of you.
I'm not calling the time, her alarm is going off, and once her alarm goes off, I simply say, thank you. You may proceed, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. If you could have the madam, the madam clerk, because they cannot see, the speakers will say they cannot see on the other side because the screens are down. If the clerk could call the time and then you repeat it, please, that way people are feeling you may not, you're not sure you can be a part show this evening.
That is absolutely correct, the meeting is not happening tonight. The alarm is going off for everyone to hear, I'm not calling time.
But you can hardly, you can hardly hear it. I'm sorry, because that, you can't hardly hear.
Madam clerk, after requesting Ms. Audrey Young, can you please make sure that you say time so that I can repeat it? Thank you.
It wasn't me, it was you, Tom.
Well, I just, um, got up here to say, I'm like the way y'all recognize the police. That was scary for me. My heart is beating, just that simple lack, because you don't want her to finish what she said, almost just got a man killed. That ain't cool. I know how I feel, you know, on the police side, you ain't letting y'all get arrested. My brother got beat to death in county jail because they thought he said something. The way you did that was so wrong as a black man. You just recognized the police to a black man. He don't even have the mind capacity half of the time to understand what's going on. No, no, he jumped street with all y'all, no matter what you say, that officer jumped street. That's what he did, when he beat up that guy, and he was playing. All you had to do was wait ten more seconds for this lady to finish her words, and he would have been over with. You almost decided to riot with your crazy self.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Is there anyone else? Would you like to council response? Is there anyone who would like to address the audience? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
I'll say, whenever I come here, I doubt how they're gonna arrest people, because causes think, but I remember the charter's sitting here, and I guess you pick and choose what you want out of it. It says, uh, public servant, child, accept gifts, gratitude, honor, or other things of value to many person or company doing business or seeking to do business with the city of Flint. It also says, you can't hold for yourself in this charter for yourself to get money, but I've seen that go on here. So you pick and choose, and you're against the people here, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. You're welcome. I would like to address the council.
Flint City Hall, certainly, man. It's pretty unfortunate that John couldn't be here tonight. I understand his bid was turned down, uh, because he didn't follow the rules. I'm pretty sure it was a million dollars, I think it was seven, five thousand dollars was his bid. But regardless, we're here again after eighteen months. You know, we, I think the big deal last time was, uh, money. So Frank went ahead, he bumped his bid, about a thousand dollars or something. So we're here tonight, we just don't want these golfers to come back to see it with us. I mean, you got somewhere, somehow, you guys have to make decisions. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Claire McLean, two issues. One, the ARPA money that was transferred into the general funds, guess what? That's still our money. We ain't forgot that. You got a budget hearings coming up, you can still propose sixteen million additional dollars for home repair and rehabilitation. The council lady in the fourth ward told, talked about only four or five homes being rehabbed, she should be leading the charge for more money, more millions for rehab and rehabilitation. Number two, the council, somebody please, ask for a special order for the one hundred and ninety homes that were foreclosed upon as ours. We hearing it on the street that the city of Flint was never notified, never notified about the auction, giving you an opportunity to have right first refusal. And I just cannot understand, in this gritty, tough, justic-minded town, why the council will continue to bypass your authority? We said at the first hearings that you had about ARPA, that we the people is the partners. We are the partners. Not the foundations, a big box number, we are the partners. There's no reason you can't add fifteen or sixteen million dollars for home repair and send out RFP. You run this damn city. Why are you handing your power over to others? This is so anti-Flint, and just one more thing before I get cut off. The way you all talk to the residents is just a crime. It's a shame you both are. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves, talking to the people like that. And we never had some of these incidents we're experiencing with this council, when we had the emergency manager. When the emergency manager came in, all of y'all's voices were silent.
Right. Right.
All of y'all didn't have a vote. And now you gonna single out first ward council person and shut down his vote. How undemocratic can you be? So this council need to rethink and reestablish some kind of moral fiber and some courage. Whatever people come up here and say, face the music, you're elected officials.
Thank you.
My name is Sayce, who's on this, uh, this. First of all, I want to say all this money, our money, taxpayers' money, that you spent to prevent this changes, and the screens don't work. That's our money. We shouldn't have to depend on anybody, we should be able to depend on these screens that says no signals. Secondly, I want to say that the speakers were right about dollar funds, dollar funds belong to the people. The foundation, it's not the 501(c)(3), belongs to the people, and it was sent here on behalf of the people, that's what it was. And with the appointments, I think you must follow the charter. Well, I'm not gonna say follow the charter, you should follow the charter, but nine out of ten times, you don't follow the charter. And this is a law, it's not all of you, but most of you are lawless, and you do whatever you want to do. With respect to the hundred and ninety houses, uh, Mr. Clinton, I foray the county, they gave me all the information, including who they sent, the know what cities and township they sent the notice to. And you ought to ask your city clerk, you don't have to take our word, that the city of Flint didn't hurt, it says you have to notify the clerk. Did she get notified with respect to those nine, a hundred and ninety houses? I know she did, and I made her copies to disseminate to those council persons. So the county did what was wrong and illegal by not notifying the city clerk. Those questions you could ask the clerk. And finally, I want to say is that this is, uh, Black History Month, Black Heritage Month, and it's very important that we remember that we stand tall, and I say we have Americans and blacks on the shoulders above. And a lot of you sitting in those seats, which are above that, even been sitting in those seats, it wasn't because of people that lived, suffered, and died in those. That you've been sitting in those seats, man. If you've been sitting in those seats. So saying that, I hope that you all will do the right thing, and don't consent agenda, agenda come separated, thank you.
Thank you. It's now time for council.